Evening, everyone. I would like to call the July 27th meeting of the Sagatuck City Council to order. Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Becken?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Lewis? Okay, she is. Peterson?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
For plank?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, all present and accounted for. Next item is the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 13th. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor? I move, I move we approve the regular city council meeting minutes of July 13, 2020 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second. For plank.
Was that Garrett?
For plank.
Or Jane? Who did the second?
I.
Move by Peterson, second by for plank to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Please take the roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
For plank? Yes. Lewis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
And Truster?
Yes. The minutes of July 13th are approved. Mayor's comments, just a couple regarding our favorite subject, COVID-19. We checked with the health department today and our caseload in Sagatuck and Douglas has been stable. There are six cases reported from Sagatuck and two from Douglas, so nothing in the last few days. And I suppose that's, that's good news. On the bad news side, I received a number of comments and concerns about behavior that our residents have experienced in terms of violating the COVID-19 executive orders in town over the weekend. And perhaps Lieutenant Ennsfield can comment further on this, but I would like to point out that if anybody is concerned about any of these things, there is a form that the Allegan County Health Department has, and you can get that by Googling "Allegan County Health Department Complaint Form", that you can fill out and they will follow up on those complaints. City manager comments?
The only comment I'd like to make is the city hall entrance to the building. We have a drop box that we installed. It's a secured and locked drop box that citizens can use for tax payments and also more importantly for their absentee ballots. We just got this installed recently. We're seeing a lot of use. People are dropping off their absentee ballots in there. It's locked. And then the city clerk will go and retrieve those. So if people want to use that, they don't have to come into city hall. It's much more safer. They can use it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we encourage people to utilize that. Thank you.
That's good. All right, under agenda changes, I would like to propose a couple of things. One is that we add Dean Cappella to our guest speaker list. The second being that when we get to public comments, I'd like to make them the first public comment session, both on agenda items and any other comments that people wish to make. And the reason for that would be that item C under new business will require us probably to move into a closed session. And I hate to have people sit around during a lengthy closed session just to make public comments after that. So unless I hear any objections, I'll make those changes. And are there any other changes to be proposed? All right, hearing none. Next item is our guest speaker, and first is Lieutenant Brett Ennsfield from the Sheriff's Department. Brett?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, first of all, I'll answer some of the COVID complaints. Yeah, working with the health department, you know, obviously, you know, as they stated earlier in the other work sessions, that they typically aren't working on the weekends. I know they are following up on the complaints they received and so forth because we have gotten some feedback from some of the documentation of other things that we've sent over to them. So yeah, I would feel that if people are filling those out, that we'll be followed up with. If there's something egregious and it needs to be, you know, directly brought to attention or so forth, I mean, obviously, they can call in a complaint to our central dispatch and, you know, we'll respond accordingly. We do work with those agencies closely, just like we would in our jurisdiction and the system and ways needed. So hopefully that answers the questions for anybody with that. I'd like to note that over the last hot several days, beach usage is definitely up all across the shorelines of the county. You know, with the high water and erosion, all the parking and trespassing complaints were up as long as they were, have been all summer. So you guys aren't the only ones that are having some of the beach issues and complaints coming from the higher usage because of the COVID. And I guess that's a good thing that it's getting people outside and using some of the outdoor resources that were probably not used as much. The Sheriff's Department lobby has, we've closed that down just because of the COVID again. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, they are taking appointments. And you can get some of the business done through those appointments, which is trying to limit exposure for people and stuff with the preventive measures and upticks of some of the numbers. Again, social distancing and wearing a mask is appropriate for if somebody comes into the office. We also are having deputies, you know, try to make phone calls as much as possible. You may see on some of the call logs that, you know, Sagatuck deputy may, you know, call somebody during his shift. So it may have a, you know, a phone number or address listed in the call logs that are kind of outside of the area for, you know, what seems maybe a non-priority complaint that may explain that in the coming future. Especially if they're not busy or something like that, they may, you know, grab a five-minute phone call to, you know, alleviate a complaint and so forth for the general patrol. The deputy flockster today downloaded the speed sign on Allegan Street. That data should be available this week. I'll get that to Kirkus tomorrow morning. He said it looked consistent with, you know, any other stuff. It wasn't very high of numbers and so forth. So the Park Street data is attached in the packet. Obviously, the goal of these signs, first and foremost, is they have traffic compliance and slow traffic down, which I think if you analyze the data, that you can see that's probably happening. I'll leave that up to you guys to make the decision of that. And, you know, the data collection of these signs is a, you know, secondary thing. And it's obviously, you know, something that can be used for a lot of decision-making for a lot of different things. I spoke with the deputies over the last week or so. They're reporting, they have been sitting out there doing traffic enforcement. They've been seeing speeds, which were relayed to me that were consistent with the data on the speed signs today. Seeing that it was a cloudy day, I took the opportunity to go out there knowing that the beach probably wouldn't have to be as busy and that the speeds potentially could be higher. I sat out there for approximately an hour and a half in three different spots along Park Street in the jurisdiction of Sagatuck and saw the statistics that were pretty consistent with the data were gathered. The highest speed when I was sitting out there was roughly about 31 miles an hour. So most of the other speeds were lower. There was some bike and foot traffic along with that. So that's pretty much what I have for my report tonight. Anybody has any questions, I'd be honored to answer those.
Chris?
Yes, you said they called the central dispatch number. Is that 911?
Yeah, they can call 911 or the not emergencies is 673-3899. I'm not sure what the direct, I think there might be an 857 number that's a direct number. But yeah, they can just call 911. When they answer it, they just, you know, they'll ask if it's an emergency or not if they're busy, so.
Okay, and then the mayor talked about getting a lot of discussion about people not doing the masks. Did you see an increase in calls or complaints to you?
No, we actually have not. I mean, we've had some. I would say your region, just driving around the county on the west side here with the tourism stuff, I think mask usage is a lot higher in this part of the county than it is in some of the other parts of the county, just from driving around and, you know, observing people so far. So I don't know if that's just because of the tourism or all the signage or emphasis that's put on it. I, you know, I'm not 100% sure on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Brett? All right, thank you very much. Next problem, Dean Cappella for a few comments. Dean, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'll just start out with some of the things that we're doing as a commission. I did mention to you before that we're doing that groundwater study. And just so you know, that study has been done. They have retrieved and processed all the well database within Allegan County. And they're in the midst of putting together a 3D aquifer material model as far as that I should be able to give out to everyone and you'll be able to see what that is. So I think it's going to be helpful for everyone. Also, just for your information, we are doing an Allen County scrap tire recycling again. That starts August 1st. The only problem is it's way in Trowbridge and in Salem Townships. That's going to be from 9 to 12. And I'll just give the addresses because you'll record it and maybe you'll be able to pass it out to your community. But 913M40 and then 4145 29th Street. There's also recycling on August 8 at the Oscego Township Hall, 416th Street in Oscego. And if you just go on the website, you'll be able to see how many tires you can bring and so forth for your community. Just for information, Allen County Transportation just got five new transit buses. They hold 16 to 20 with federal grant 80%, state grant 20% with wheelchair lifts. And they're very nice units. August 9 to 15, Brett, is telecommunicator week. If you know of any of them, they'd appreciate a call from any of you just to say what a job they do. I know I was looking at the, you know, the, all the sheriff's law enforcement stat, I think in the second quarter was 10,000 some calls when you added up fire, EMS, everybody. It was like 45,000 calls in the second quarter of the year. Amazing how much they do. Just for your information also, I've told you before that we get revenue sharing from the casino. You know, they call it pill payment lieu of taxes for this. From October of 2019 to March of 2020, we just got a check from them for $429,998. That would be the taxes, but we call it revenue sharing from them. And that's about it for my report. One last thing. All of you have seen the eyesore of Rockton. Obviously, that went back to our, you know, they, that went delinquent. So we ended up getting that piece of property. It's been just a nightmare for us trying to do something. We got a grant to try to take care of the asbestos. And now we just made a decision just because it's such with kids trying to get in it with a danger that's there. We're going to try to demolish it, see where the costs come in and see if we can get a grant to help us with that. We're going to try to take it down to finally make that property into something. But I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Have a good day.
Thank you very much, Dean.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to public comments. And first I take comments for anybody who wishes to speak on an agenda item. Please indicate that you'd like to speak by speaking up and limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody wish to make a comment on an agenda item?
I'd like to make a comment.
Gregory, go ahead. Please identify yourself.
And?
Gregory Muncie, Sagatuck resident. I live on Butler Street. And I wanted to share my observations of the recent topic of excessive speeding on Park Street. I've been a full-time resident here for over 12 years and am more often than not on foot or bicycle or electric bike, as most of you and our locals know. On many weekends, I drive a company vehicle almost every day, whether on foot, bike, or car. I travel Park Street at various times of the day. During the last few weeks, I've been especially observant to traffic while on Park Street and rarely encounter others excessively speeding. Two weeks ago, while driving on Park Street with a company vehicle, I was waved down by a resident. When I rolled down my window, I politely asked if I could help with something and she replied that I needed to slow down. And this was just after passing the radar there that had clocked me at 22 miles an hour. And I explained to her that she, that I was going 22 miles an hour. She then apologized to me and she just wanted to make sure everybody knows to slow down. Driving later that day in Park Street while at 20 miles per hour, I was again given an angrily gestured hand movement to slow down by an elderly gentleman. I assumed he was a resident or whatever. While walking and biking this road, I realized that it is narrow. And I'm especially alert to vehicles. There, there has also been occasions when I'm asked to slow down on my e-bike and it's a fact that my e-bike cannot go faster than 25 miles an hour. It just can't do it. It's not a motorcycle. It's an e-bike and it's programmed to do that. So of course, no one wants to see anyone creamed or killed or whatever you want to call it. And I don't doubt that there is the occasional person going over 25 miles an hour, like our officer just said, that he saw someone going 31. Whether it be a visitor or local in too much of a hurry. However, from someone who travels this road, by all means, almost every single day, I have observed no excessive speeding on Park Street and feel these past allegations have no valid proof as reflected in the data from the radars that I read in the packet here that was emailed by the city. Now, I just wanted to express that solutions for the residents to ensure pedestrian safety can include building a sidewalk or reducing the speed limit. But until then, I think that there is just an over, maybe, maybe a little bit of overreaction with some of the residents there. I find it hard to even drive over 25 miles an hour. That road is narrow. It goes up and down. There's lots of curves. I mean, if you're going much faster than 25 or even 30 miles an hour, I don't see how you would run off that road. So it is a challenge and I understand that. But I just wanted to express my observations as somebody who rides it on all ways, shapes, and form. And how I'm there almost every day at different times during the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory. Appreciate it. I have two raised hands and first I'll call upon Gordon. Could you identify, unmute yourself and identify yourself, please, where you live?
Yeah, could you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I live at 714 Park Street. And my name is Gordon Neil LaForte. I just wanted to comment on, it's appropriate after that last comment because I totally disagreed with what was said there. I walk Park Street four to five times per week. And, and I think there's a different observation from driving a car than walking on the street. I'm not the lady that he mentioned, but I may be the old gentleman who told him to slow down. The first speed study, maybe a couple of years ago, told us that 70% at Interlocken exceed the speed limit. That's what it said. Now, my comments here really are just relating to the speed data signs and their relevance to inferring risk on Park Street. Park Street remains a very dangerous road. I don't think we're overreacting. I think we're reacting. The data presented in the Interlocken sign, which is a good placement and a good sign, is average speed. Average speed is nice to present and it's useful information, but it's not useful for looking at the amount of risk coming from that sign. The outliers are what we need to look at. And on that chart, there's no mention of what the maximum speeds were. Personally, I think even 25 is too high on that road when there's no way to walk and there's no safety on the side and the road is in terrible condition. So I just suggest with the Interlocken sign that maybe we want to add the high speeds to the outliers, which are really going to be the ones that cause accidents because average speed is just not what we need to look at risk. The new southbound sign absolutely needed. It tells us vehicle count, speed, at the location of the sign and provides an alert to drivers about their speed and the limit. But again, it's not to be used to assess speed risk. The reasons are the sign is about 150 yards from where the Ogle Beach perimeter traffic stops and it has to stop. It's about 150 yards from where Southbound traffic is going, supposed to be going 15 miles per hour. And that, that goes all the way to perimeter. It's also right after a curve with the retaining walls near the Johnsons, the hill, and absolutely no place to walk. So my point is it's a good sign, but it's not going to tell you anything about the risk on the remainder of Park Street. I think again that the best place to put a sign is where the gravity speeders enter Sagatuck before driving all the way to Interlocken without having any challenge to them. That's the best place to meet speeds. And I think we all remember what Mr. Spangler said yes last, two, three years ago about the speeds on that road. The last thing is the vehicle count. The vehicle count was mentioned at 140,000 per season. I think that shocked a little members of council. But I mentioned that the, the Interlocken only measures northbound traffic. And what goes north soon goes south. So there's a higher risk of two-way traffic and I think 140 is probably materially understated. The count should be rechecked and I think it should be presented to the council. And I think the best way to do it, we can't go back and check it, but the best way to do it is just simply to add the Interlocken count to the southbound count and we're going to get the volume of traffic. And that's important because if you're walking.
Running all the time, but go ahead.
If you're walking in Park Street and there's two-way traffic, a lot of the traffic, a lot of the people will, vehicles will move over into the other lane. That's impossible to do when you've got two-way traffic on the street. So you're really stuck being close to the traffic and the traffic is speeding. And really, I walk the street four or five times a day and I have no idea what we're, we're trying to establish in terms of no speeds. I think you'll find speeds in the 40s and the 50s if you look at the maximum speeds at the Interlocken sign. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Dan Fox, please identify yourself and where you reside. We're not hearing you, Dan. Still not. Nope. Unless, is anyone else hearing, Dan?
No.
Okay. Sorry. All right, we can come back to public comments a little later if you can figure out the technology.
Mr. Mayor, you could use the phone number and call in on a cell phone and.
Good point. Dan, do you want to do that?
Which is here on the agenda on the, on the page here. You'll see it right here highlighting. Call one of those numbers and. And then enter the meeting ID, which is 2698572603. There we go.
There we go.
Has he got me? Put your, put your, mute your computer, though. Mute your computer's computer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Ain't technology wonderful? Mayor Truster, you have me or not?
Yes, we do. We have you, Dan.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks. Sorry, sorry for indulging my computer difficulties. I can't remember which, which one of you it was. I think it may have been Barry Johnson who asked, asked Lieutenant Ennsfield for those, to make those call reports part of the regular meetings. But I think it was a terrific, absolutely terrific, and I for one appreciated a great deal. I did it a little bit surprising when you think you live in a quiet, peaceful little, you know, town on the shore of the lake, to see that in the just those two weeks that those reports covered this time, there were 64 incidents. And of course, they ranged from what appeared to be pretty much minor or nothing sorts of calls, but all the way up to larceny, disorderly contact, suspicious person, whatnot, even domestic assault and at least one weapons risk, weapons offense that I remember. But what struck me as particularly when looking at these and knowing a couple of our sheriff's deputies, was that each and every one of those responses by one of those deputies carried with it the very real possibility of sudden and unpredictable violence directed at that officer. You know, it seems to me, I got a lecture from my dad when I was, before I got to drive. You stop, please put your hands on the stool. You'll keep your mouth shut, do exactly what they tell you. And if there's a problem, we'll work it out at the station later on. But people don't get that advice these days, apparently. And there are obviously way too many violence-prone or otherwise unstable individuals out there nowadays. But I think even more sadly, or every bit as sadly, the riots and arson and lawlessness and nonsense pronouncements like "defund the police" that are seen and heard on television seemingly every day. I think all of that combines to only embolden people who are violence-prone and relieve, relieve them of even the slightest stop point in their psyche such as this. And as I said, at every call, at every call, traffic stops, suspicious person, certainly domestic abuse, there's even more danger to the thin blue line that protects us all. So all I wanted to say was I think we owe our Sagatuck deputies, indeed, I think we owe all our first responders and we owe Allegan County Sheriff Frank Baker in particular, our profound respect and appreciation. These people all have our backs all the time. If there, if there's a way for you guys to repeatedly say thank you to them, I don't think we can say thank you enough. These people are truly brave public servants. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Personally, I couldn't agree more. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Any topic? I don't see any hands raised. Okay. All right, then we'll move on to request for payment, accounts payable, approval. Is there a motion? Gary?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $497,061.98.
Is there a second? Chris?
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Peterson to approve the accounts payable. Any discussion? Gary?
I just want to mention that out of that 497,436,000 of that is tax pass-through, which keeps our actual expenditures to a tidy $60,666.
Really noted. Any other comments? This is a roll call vote for approval. Would you call the roll, please?
Johnson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
For plank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The accounts payable are approved. We have no ordinances to introduce. There are no public hearings and no unfinished business. So we will move to new business. So we will move to new business. And the first item is the intergovernmental agreement for cemetery services. Is there a motion? Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table the intergovernmental agreement. We can, I'd like to get it back on the agenda for the next regular meeting, maybe discuss it at the next workshop. But we've gotten a lot more information about the actual financial. Situation and how it's running everything, and I for one, I'd like to digest that a little bit. I think that the. The agreement is probably in pretty good shape, and I don't think that would I would change that much. But I think maybe having a workshop and then a meeting will give the public a little more time to weigh into it. Because this this is a pretty big deal in my book, so that's my reason for doing that.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moved by Johnson, second by Verplank to table the motion. I mean, table the uh, intergovernmental agreement until the next regular meeting of the city council. Um, any discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote on.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. I have a question. Uh, I I think I'm a little confused. I thought this was the cemetery services agreement, which was for one year. I'm not, I thought that we were going to eventually get into a discussion on an intergovernmental. Intergovernmental agreement, but my understanding that. This was just to cover us for a year. So perhaps I need more clarification. As I recall, Kirk was suggesting that we. Get together with the other municipalities to. According to, let's see, it's act number two fifteen to form the form a joint cemetery authority, but. I I see no reason for us to belabor this any further for a one-year contract.
Barry.
Uh, you're absolutely right, Garnet. I don't think delaying it by two weeks hurts anything, but it gives the public an opportunity for us to hear more from the public. We'll still have plenty of time. It's two weeks out of the year to get the public involved. Uh, like I said, I probably wouldn't even change it. I'd just like to give it a little little extra time for our constituents.
Ali.
Um. I mean, it affects what our residents are paying for cemetery plots, though, until we have this agreement, they're paying two thousand dollars instead of. A hundred and twenty or two hundred, so. I mean.
That's true.
Anyone else?
Mark here, Ken. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh. I think we're talking about. Two separate issues. And and maybe even three separate issues. One is just the agreement. That really is a retroactive agreement, I believe, which I'm in favor of of voting on tonight. Uh, in paying the. Maintenance, our share of the maintenance costs. Will allow our residents to get the lowest possible cost for for plots. Related to that is the property issue up the property maintenance that we do township property at the. Holland Street Blue Star exit. And and then the discussion about the. Intergovernmental, well, actually not the intergovernmental agreement, but the possibility of looking at cemeteries. Of being maybe. Yeah, from a different perspective, maybe in terms of a. Some type of an authority. So I I'm separating those things in my mind. Uh, but I think the. Approval of the agreement. For the maintenance cost to pay our fair share is is paramount in in my mind tonight.
Chris.
I agree with Mark. I think that the first step with the agreement. Gives us what we need to move forward if something should arise with with one of our residents. But then we can do the other one after we've had a little more time for discussion, but I think we should move on this this part.
Yeah, I myself am in agreement with that. I I see no problem with just moving forward with this because there's plenty of. Time to negotiate the the other aspects of it. In the meantime, it protects our citizens. If they wish to use the cemetery. Anyone else?
If they wish to use the cemetery?
Well, it would be a survivor who wishes to use the cemetery. All right, let's um, take a vote then on the motion to table this. Issue. Would you call the roll, please? I know vote would be.
Johnson?
Go ahead.
Based on the debate and the council comments, I will vote no.
Uh, Verplank? Will come back. Peterson?
No.
Louis?
No.
Leo?
No.
Becken?
No.
Verplank?
Sorry, no.
And Truster?
No. So the motion is defeated. Now, is there a motion to?
Yeah.
With regards, excuse me, I was looking up my.
Sorry.
Garnet, did you have your?
Yeah. Motion to approve the cemetery services agreement between the City of Sagatuck and Sagatuck Township as presented. And direct the city manager to engage with the City of Douglas and Sagatuck Township regarding creating a cemetery authority. And try community voter approved dedicated cemetery millage and report back to Sagatuck City Council no later than December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved by Louis, second by Peterson to approve the agreement. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in real quick, we did have, I sent an email to council before the meeting. The agreement that was in your packet. Section five, the city attorney reviewed that and and made me aware that there was some language that. He recommended not be in there previously. So he sent a revised changes to that. And and Mr. Slug gets on the line, too, so he might be able to speak to this. But basically, what you can see on your screen here, section five. We had some calculations, some confusing calculations about population and things of that nature. And the city attorney is recommending to streamline that and remove those. So if you want to hear from the city attorney, he could explain a little bit further.
I'd like that.
Yeah. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, real quick. The agreement, as you probably know, is based in large measure on agreements that the city has used in the past with the township. The formula this year. That Kirk had proposed was much more of a straightforward, straight payment. And that's the fifty-eight thirty-three. That's referenced. The language that was shown here as being struck. Was frankly, a carryover from one of the older agreements in which we weighted population and various factors. If we were to leave that in, in my opinion, all you're doing is likely leading to confusion if in the event anyone's trying to interpret. Exactly what the city would owe and under what circumstances. So I, my recommendation was if if you want, in fact, a straight. Payment, then let's just leave it at that and get rid of the rest.
Very well. Any reaction to that?
And I got a question.
Yeah, Mark.
Uh, can it Kirk or or Jeff can answer this. Right below section. Five, I don't know what that is. A, maybe?
Yes.
Is that new?
No, that's just a, it was, um, the previous one had a had a Roman numeral two, so it's just changed the A.
Okay, but the city shall notics, that that paragraph that still is in blue, that is in the existing agreement?
Correct. That's the one that you had in the packet. Yep.
And that's, that's an old part of the old agreements also. That's my.
No, no, it's 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 new to this particular agreement that for this year.
So so we're attaching. The 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 feet that we're we're trying to associate a cost for the work we do up on Blue Star and Holland Street to the cemetery agreement?
Well, what we're trying to do is we're giving this township the option that if they want to. Get the full amount, the five thousand, eight thirty-three eighty-six, then they also are assuming the maintenance out on that area. Um, which is in the township. If they want to have us continue to maintain that, we spend four thousand dollars annually, which we don't have any legal jurisdiction to do without an agreement. Then they it gives them the ability to choose which option they would like. Um, and that's why it's in the it's in the in the in this particular agreement. At least get something where we have legal authorization to go out there and spend those funds. So it kind of takes care of two issues with one agreement.
And we didn't get an opportunity to to discuss this at the at the workshop and. But I I don't know if I feel comfortable attaching these things to get putting that into a cemetery agreement, to be honest with you. I have no problem approaching them and having a dialogue about that that expense. Spending it outside, you know, we're spending money outside of maintenance for a township property that I I think that's a good discussion to have, but. What if they've said, what if they say vote no? They know we don't like that.
Well, they guess, well, then they could, well, I mean, well, here's the the issue is I can't legally continue to spend money outside of the city limits without it without an agreement. So if I stop mowing that property tomorrow, there's going to be some serious issues. I think this is good because it gives the township the, if they don't have someone able to, because they're going to be, if we if it costs us four thousand dollars, it's going to cost them a substantial amount of money, too. So it gives them the ability to. Continue to get that property maintained. If they want us to continue to maintain, and if not, if they have someone that it's in their existing. Contracts that can go and mow that for less, they may say, fine, that's we'll take over the responsibility and the city pays them the five thousand, eight hundred. So it's really just a clarification, and it's a little bit of a. If we don't do something now, I don't think we're going to get it resolved because there's not going to be any movement on the other jurisdiction to really. To to really move on something like that. So it's sort of a little bit of leverage on our our side to kind of get this thing resolved. It's hanging out there for many, many, many years.
But that could just, I'm sorry to keep coming back, Ken, but to me, that would just. Add to more dialogue and more response and further delaying this issue about the the agreement. Uh, we've been. We've been doing this maintenance thing, I don't know, for quite a while. I'm guessing ten plus years or more. And. I don't, I I just, I just think it just throws a little bit more. You know, a little more clutter into the the decision here on both sides, township and the city.
Chris?
Um, would it be possible to pull out A and B? I don't have the the written text in front of me. I believe those are the only parts that are related to the maintenance part. And move forward with the agreement, and then we can always have a special meeting within eighteen hours. To do a separate agreement for the maintenance of that property on Holland. That might be a solution.
The only problem is I don't think you're going to have a lot of motivation on the other unit, the unit, the other governmental unit to move on that. They would have no, no reason to do so. In this case, you have all the leverage with the cemetery agreement. You can very well do that, but I think you're just lost all your ability to negotiate myself.
But this is only a one-year agreement to begin with, right?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, Garnet. Yeah, I, you know, I see this as putting the ball in the township's court, so to speak. They could, you know, quite honestly, because I noodled over this for a little while in the same kind of way, but. They have an option, they have a choice, which I feel either one is palatable for them. They'll decide what works. And if that's township property, in my opinion, they should be using township funds to maintain it. Um, and I know that this has been going on for ten years, but we're at a point now where we can kind of. Cross that line and say either or. So the the choice is theirs to make. And I'll be curious to see how they address it. So I think it's, there are two good viable options for them, and I'm comfortable with either one.
Very, very, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hence my. Thought of tabling it for a couple of weeks, but I do, you know, I I. I'm going with it. I do like to tie up the two issues in one document. Because it just cleans everything up and not two separate agreements. Now, somebody can make an amendment still to strike part of that agreement out. And then that would be removed, and then we'll have to negotiate grass cutting separately. So there's options. Thank you.
Seems like that's an unnecessary complication, though. So in fact, do we need to make an amendment to incorporate the attorney's changes into this document?
This is the, this is the agreement that's presented tonight.
Okay, so the the changes in red are reflected in the document we have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion?
No, I'll call the question.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Then we'll have a vote at your roll call vote. Please call the roll.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the agreement is approved. Uh, next item is the. Uh, city boards and commission reappointments. We have a a number of reappointments that we're considering at this meeting, and then. At a future meeting, we'll be filling some vacancies with new appointments. So is there a motion? Uh, Barry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I got to get down to it here on the thing, but I'm going to add something to it. I would like to make a motion to. Appoint. James Baugh with the term expiring July first, twenty twenty-three. Zack Surface with the term expiring July first, twenty twenty-two. And alternate John Ludlow with the term expiring July first, twenty twenty-three to the City of Sagatuck Zoning Board of Appeals. Richard Crawford and Stephanie Velacity with terms expiring July first, twenty twenty-three. To the City of Sagatuck Planning Commission. John. Canarsa, and I'm inserting, and Garnett Lewis with the term expiring. August first, twenty twenty-three to the Sagatuck Historic Commission. And the council reappointment of Dan Fox with the term expiring July first of twenty twenty-six to the Fire Administrative Board.
Second.
Moved by. Excuse me, moved by John, second by Peterson to make these appointments. Uh, which will include one new appointment and the rest are reappointments. Any discussion? Barry.
Uh, just to explain what I, why I inserted Garnett there, and I hope she's not blindsided because. She sent us all an email, said that she'd like to volunteer to be on that commission. And I and I thank Garnett for doing that, and I didn't want to miss that opportunity.
I would agree. So any other discussion?
Just hold my hand. There it is.
Oh, Mark.
Yeah, I guess his question go to Kirk or Cindy. Is there any conflict with a city councilperson serving on that particular commission? I know there are some rules that regulate that.
Well, there's precedent for it in that Chris was a representative on the HDC as a councilperson.
Okay.
We did have discussions last year, I believe, whether it's advantageous to have a council member on the HDC, and I think we all agreed it was.
Yeah, I I I I overlooked that. I was just, something stuck in the back of my mind saying that, you know. Have to be careful about those appointments, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I would draw, I would draw. That's fine.
Okay, Chris?
I I think it was very important to have a city council member there. I mean, they're working so closely with Cindy and and the area we're in. Talk touches on zoning and all everything, so it was just very valuable, and the committee felt that way, too.
Good. Any other discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Johnson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis, are you going to abstain or vote?
I'll probably abstain.
And Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the appointments are approved. Hang on here while I get to my next item. The next item is Cossack versus city of Sagatuck, the trial and settlement strategy. I think Kirk, you want to start off with the background here and where we're going to go?
The city attorney is recommending, has provided a sample motion for the city council to enter into closed session.
Jane?
I'll move that the city council enter into closed session as permitted under section eight E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with its legal counsel regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the Cossack versus city of Sagatuck as discussion in an open meeting would impact the city's litigating or settlement position.
Second?
Move by Verplank, second by Peterson to go into closed session to consider this matter. Any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Verplank?
Yeah.
Verplank?
Yes.
Sorry, ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Verplank, yes. Peterson?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
And Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will enter closed session, and Kirk will move all non-council people into the waiting room during that period. I remind the council members that it is a closed session, so you we should not have anyone watching this in our own homes, or wherever we may be, on our own computers. So Kirk, would you tell us when we're ready to go?
Yep, I'm working on putting people in the waiting room, so give me one moment and I will. And then, so just so people know, when they, when the closed session is over, I'll bring everybody back into the regular meeting. Okay, let me just double check and make sure I got everybody on here. Cindy's on, Ken is on, Barry, Holly, Mark, Chris, Cliff Bloom is our attorney, Garnet, Jane, and Jeff. So those, we have eleven people in the meeting, which is seven council members, two attorneys, and one interim clerk. So everybody else is in a waiting room and is not able to hear the meeting, so I'm going to pause the recording.
Okay, am I back?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we got, we have gremlins tonight. I I hit the wrong button and the whole screen went blank. Anyway, Barry, I think you wanted to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement as presented between the city of Sagatuck and the Dune Ridge, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Is there a second?
Second?
Oh.
Jane?
It's Holly.
Holly.
Oh, seconded by Holly.
Okay. Move by Johnson, second by Leo to approve this settlement. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
Did we want the name Kosak in there?
I couldn't hear that.
Do we want the name Kosak in there? It was just, Barry just said city of Sagatuck and Dune Ridge. Third party added.
Can we consult the attorney, Cliff?
Yeah, so just just for the record, then, we're talking Kosak, Peter and Judith Kosak plaintiffs versus Dune Ridge and the city of Sagatuck defendants. That's the case that is being discussed and acted on this evening by the council.
Very well. Good point, Chris.
Yep.
Barry?
And I guess it gets a little difficult if I got to withdraw my motion or just, you know, I would like that wording to be as the city attorney.
The attorneys are nodding, so I believe we're okay.
Okay.
Could you read the motion, please?
Thank you, Jane.
You want to restate your motion?
Well, I don't have, I didn't write down that wording.
I can, I can read it back what I took notes on. To approve the settlement between Cossack versus Dune Ridge and the city of Sagatuck.
And?
And.
Sorry, and authorize the mayor.
Oh, yeah, and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you.
I have that.
To sign on behalf of the city.
Correct.
All right, Jeff, are we, are we on firm ground here now?
Good.
Motion, okay, thank you. Any other discussion? And this is a roll call vote. Cindy?
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The settlement is approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have no consent agenda. I'll open it up once more for public comments in case people have joined us who weren't here earlier. So if anybody has a comment, I'd ask you to keep it to three minutes, please, and try to get our attention and identify yourself. Anybody wish to make a comment? Hearing none. Under communications, we've reviewed the sheriff's office incident report and the radar speed sign report. So we'll go to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I have none listed, but are there are there any that we're unaware of? Boards, commissions, or committees? Mark?
Yeah, Cal Lake had a regular Monday meeting or monthly meeting for July, one week ago today. Was very general discussions, updates on operations. We had no action items other than approving accounts payable. One item, we did have a a conference with our city, our our authority attorney, Mark Nettleton from Mike the Myers regarding seasonal shut offs. I I briefly mentioned that, I think month ago, this is where people call Cal Lake and Cal Lake goes and shuts, sets up the water say to their cottage. In addition to that, over the years, Cal Lake got into the habit of going in and then also winterizing the cottage by draining their water pipes and either disconnecting or removing their water meter. We're going to cease that practice. It violates the various ordinances that each community has regarding maintenance of and responsibility, the property owners for their water meetings on their own water system. And the manager and the attorney are putting out a a letter to go out to all affected properties. And then we'll we'll also share that with each community manager for information and posting. Isn't that, Barry, you got anything we?
No, that's good, Mark.
Thanks. Any other reports we had?
Yeah, Ken?
Yes.
This Garnet.
This is actually a proactive heads up. The tri-community recycling committee is probably going to meet. It's looking like the tenth of August, and we have a council meeting that night. But what I'm anticipating that we're going to discuss is to flesh out how we administer a survey to the tri-communities regarding recycling and composting. And I wanted to, if possible, with this group, share that initial draft of the plans for that at the workshop prior to get your input and see what you all think about it. So if you're willing to do that, that would be great.
Well, let's put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Jane, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, we did have a fire township fire district meeting, board meeting. I guess the things that are important that happened there was there was a funding request for the replacement of twenty one seventy one, which is a fireboat. It's our second fireboat. It just fell apart last year, so we need to get a new one, and that one was a used boat. Anyway. And we did.
Jane, is that the big one?
No. No, it's the second boat. It's the smaller one that goes upriver.
Okay.
We also had a funding approval for new Genesis E-Force extrication tools. We have one set of these tools, and we are just purchasing another for another engine. We also completed our personnel manual, which is some three hundred pages long. I haven't quite completed reading it yet, but it's fascinating. And then the other thing is I'm on the nine one one board, and that met this this month, and this is kind of interesting. They are about to implement nine one one texting, and there'll be a brochure on this and how to do it coming out shortly. It's difficult to to disperse brochures right now, but but I think you can find it on the nine one one website, so that will go into effect soon. They have used it somewhat on a trial basis and been somewhat successful with it. Comes in handy for domestic violence occasionally and that kind of thing, so just wanted to let you know that the nine one boarding board is working and and that was a big thing that we talked about last week.
Hey, thank you. Any other reports? Then we'll move to comments.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Ah, yes, at the July thirteenth council meeting, I asked for an update from the Blue Star Trail Committee. And I don't know if they're prepared to give that report or not, but if they're not tonight, maybe at the next regular council meeting, we could get an update on the Blue Star Trail Committee.
Sure. Holly, you want to update us on on the trail? You're still muted, I'm sorry.
There's no report at this time.
Okay. Then let's move to council comments. Holly, as long as you're unmuted, go ahead.
I have no comments to make right now.
Okay, Barry?
Yes. Good meeting. I would like to encourage individuals to use the public comment section of the meeting to vote their concerns and comments. In particular, I'd like to encourage the four new candidates for city council to use this opportunity to be involved in the process of city government and comment on agenda items, as well as take advantage to express their views on any topic over the next six meetings leading up to the November elections.
Thank you. Jane?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Garnet?
Yeah, really quickly, a quick question. I got an email today from some folks who live down by the dingy docks asking if we could get some of the signs, Kirk, like you put in front of city hall, placed by the dingy docks, that they've noticed a lot of visitors who come in that way don't wear a mask, and it might help to put a sign or two up. So that would, a request.
Yep, I can take care of that, no problem.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
That was a well-used dock over the weekend, man, they were.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark?
I'm good, Ken, thank you.
Okay. I think I got everybody. Chris, Chris?
I'm good, too, thanks.
Okay, I'm good, too. Thank you, everybody, for participation. Jeff, we appreciate the work you did on the settlement and and good night, everybody.
Oh, we need a roll call vote.
What we do to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
A second.
Does anybody oppose that? Roll call, please. Cindy?
Peterson?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, sorry, I'm just used to gaveling the meeting horn.
I know.
All righty, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.